Welcome this Monday night, January 11th to the Planning Commission meeting. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The next item for tonight's agenda is approval for the agenda. Does anyone have any changes that they need to make or would like to make? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval? Second?
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on would be the approval of the minutes for the December 7th, 2015, meeting. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to make?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have three small changes.
Okay.
For reference, page four, second paragraph from the bottom, second line, second sentence starts, "Climate indicated the proposal is for a two-story structure with 120 units." So it's a three-story structure, not a two-story structure. Page five, middle of the page, paragraph starting, "Far said he would like to discuss the landscape plan as it does not appear they have one." The context was the tree replacement plan, not the landscape plan. And last but not least, page seven, under "See the Cal Point Project," third paragraph from the bottom, second sentence talking about Chad Ayer. It says Chad Ayer, architect on the project. He was actually the civil engineer on the project. That's all.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other changes or comments they'd like to make? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the maintenance as amended.
Second?
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Moving on to public hearings for tonight. The first public hearing is the Moss, M-O-S-S, site. Location of that project is 9811 Flying Cloud Drive, and the request is for site plan review on 13.45 acres. And with that, will the proponent of the project please come forward, state your name for city record, spell your last name, please, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Hi, my name is Dan O'Brien. I need the clicker.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry, my name is Dan O'Brien.
Mr. Brian, can you give us your address, please?
Sure. It's 15703 Boulder Creek Drive in Minnetonka.
Thank you.
Minnesota. I'm here representing the architectural firm of DSO Architects, which is me. And hello, Ed. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Good to see you. I've been retained by the city to design an unheated storage building to be located on the Moss site. Moss is Maintenance Outdoor Storage Site. Let's see. Technologically challenged, sorry. On. Click. How am I doing? Nothing, huh? Oh, gotta make sure the computer's on. I'm not used to this high technology, so, sorry, guys. I'm used to the old, big old boards and long, pointy things.
Do we need to be able to see if they're working on it or continue to work? Can I just hold you up?
They are in business. Tell them what's up. This is the Moss.
There we go.
The Moss Storage Site. Moss stands for Maintenance Outdoor Storage Site. The site was purchased in 2002 from, it's a former drive-in movie theater site by the city, and some initial development was done in 2005. Salt and sand storage facility was constructed. In addition, at that time, a master plan was created for the site, and at that time, a building, potential building was identified on the site that was called, I believe it was cold, unheated cold storage building, and for off-season storage. This, our particular development that we're proposing conforms to that plan, and that's the location that we placed the building. At that time, the building was anticipated being about 9,000 square feet. Our plan calls for a slightly larger building. The plan itself is, the building is to the northwest of the existing salt-sand storage building. It takes advantage of the existing paving on the site. The site has a very large paved area that is still, is being used today by maintenance and by the public works for various purposes. And we're adding a little bit of hard surface area to access doors on the north side of the building. There is a potential for a future expansion to the east of about 6,400 square feet. The building itself is just under 13,000 square feet. A small portion of the building is planned to be heated. This is something that came out of our planning session with the Public Works Departments of Parks, Utilities, and Streets. And the unheated portion of the building is to house equipment that was used during the winter to service the salt and sand storage building. A front-end loader and a backhoe. And it would be desirable to have those pieces of equipment kept at temperatures slightly above freezing so that the hydraulics work and they're easier to start. And so that is why we added this particular part to the building. We're bidding it as an alternate because we're concerned about the budget for the project, and it's a potential that this might have to be added at a later date. Consequently, the design is such that that portion of the building can be removed from the design or added at a later date. There's also a provision for some outdoor covered storage for materials for road repair. Sand, salt, I'm sorry, sand, gravel, cold mix, and rock are stored in bins and will be accessed on the site. The public works would like to have that covered and protected from rain and moisture so that it's more pliable and easier to work with when they have to use it, especially in the winter. This is a little closer in view of the site, and you can see the expansion to the east that's planned, and the portion of the building which sticks out to the south is the heated portion of the building. It's a very simple building. There are no occupants. It's unoccupied. It's a big garage essentially for storing equipment. And the building itself, I got ahead of myself. Landscape plan, we've worked with Matt from Parks and Natural Resources to develop a landscape plan. The city code requires 110 caliber inches. This is actually making up for a deficit on the site from the previous construction of the sand and salt storage building, so it's a little bit more excessive than what would normally be for this size of building. And we placed the landscaping to the east of the property and to the south. We have to be aware of the airport traffic restrictions or height restrictions on the site, and so we can't go further north with our landscape materials. And we will work with the airport to make sure that we're meeting their requirements in terms of the height of the material and so forth. But this, we hope, will soften the impact of this salt and sand storage building, which is a very large structure, and we think that the landscaping along the east side especially will help. You know, you think that it's, when I first looked at it, it's landscaping between our site and the landfill, but it's very visible from Pioneer Trail, especially as you drive westbound on Pioneer Trail, and so I think this will help soften that, at least from that side. This is a layout of the building, a very colorful layout, I must say. It's got three distinct uses, utilities, streets, and parks. And this is the storage that would occur in the building during the winter. So lawnmowers, trailers that hold equipment, so forth, are stored in the site. They're parked in November and taken out again in April. And so, as I said, the building is pretty much inactive. It's just a storage building. It gets some activity during the spring and the fall when they're trading equipment back and forth. The building in the summer is less intensely used. Snow plows and removable plows from the fronts of trucks are stored there. There is talk that they may use the building a little bit more actively during the summer. They could park trucks with trailers attached to them and leave them intact and then drive them out the next morning without having to separate the trailer from the truck. So it's a convenient thing for the streets and utilities department. This is the exterior of the building. The building meets the city's standards for product or material quality. It's a precast concrete building with exposed limestone, native limestone aggregate. We've incorporated reveals. It's another requirement of the zoning ordinance. There's a, we did a few things that I tried to give a little more delight to the building. There's a gentle arch over the, at the gable end over the entrance to the building, and then we've added something, I call it an oculus, which is probably a misnomer, but Ed will laugh at me, but there's a, the pantheon has an oculus in the middle of it. That's how light comes into the pantheon. That's where the term comes from. It's a round window. It's a little reminiscent, I'm an old timer at Eden Prairie, and I was involved with the development of something called a watermark back in the 90s. And you see it on the front of this building when you walk in. There's a brick circle. You'll see it on Bachmann's, Cub Foods, Walmart. Serverman Chev has it as well. And this was a concept that the, or the planning department at that time was trying to develop an element that could be consistent through buildings in Eden Prairie and would be seen in all the buildings in a very subtle manner, hence the name watermark. So this is a little bit reminiscent of that as well. This is the south elevation, which is where the heated storage and the covered outdoor storage is. That's been placed so that it's pretty much concealed from view from the street and protected by the outdoor, or the heated storage building in terms of view. This is an artist's rendering of that corner of the building, which, looking from the northwest. The only change is we added more glass in the overhead doors to meet the requirement of the 75%, 25% higher quality to lesser quality of materials as part of the zoning ordinance. And this finally is an example of the precast wall panel that we were proposing. It's, again, it's an exposed aggregate panel with a native limestone aggregate. The reveal that we'll be using is actually a kind of an in-between these two in terms of size. The upper reveal is a four-inch reveal, and the bottom is two, and we're proposing a three-inch reveal. And there's three of them, if you recall, on the building, so. Paul Schluter and Robert are here from Public Works, and they can answer any questions that I can't answer that you may have. That concludes my presentation. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
You know, Mr. O'Brien, thank you for your presentation. We'll let you know if we have any further questions. Thank you very much. Julie, do you want to give us the staff report, please?
Sure. The request that you have before you this evening is for a site plan review on property that is zoned i or industrial general, and the request is for the construction of a cold storage building. As Mr. O'Brien stated in his presentation, the proposal does meet or exceed all of the city's zoning ordinance standards, and staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions in your report.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns about this project at all?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
A few questions. On the plan, they're talking about a building expansion heading further to the east, I believe, and along with that is a dotted representation of a driveway heading off-site to the east connecting to something called a gravel cartway off-site. Is that some kind of a connection that has functional benefit to the city and what's going on there?
Robert, I'll try to address this. Maybe you might want to chime in too, but I think that the, what's the, the neighbor to the east again is called?
To the east.
Yeah.
The landfill?
Yeah, where the landfill is. Yeah, but it's a potential connection between Flying Cloud Drive and the landfill. And there's been a request, I think, from the landfill that have, potentially have that access, and it would be something that would be negotiated, I guess, in the future or so. But there's nothing openly discussed about it yet. It's just, we indicated on the plan to show that it's a potential for the future or so.
Could happen. Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Yeah.
I like the building proper. I guess I just have a few follow-up questions to things that are kind of on-grade and below grade, more mundane things. The utility plan shows connection for water service for a sprinkler system, and I see that there's an exemption for no restrooms in the building, but there's no sanitary sewer connection to the building, and I'm just wondering if people have reviewed that? Don't you need that for a flammable waste trap for the trucks stored inside or the drained out?
If you don't have, if you don't have a sanitary sewer, you don't need a flammable waste trap. And we don't have any, what we're doing is we're sloping the floor within the building toward the doors to, for any kind of clean-out that we need to do within the building. And so, the expense of adding a sanitary sewer to the site was extraordinary.
I bet.
And we had to come a long way to get it there. And so we designed the building to not have a sanitary sewer. Without a sanitary sewer, they don't need a, with no entrance into this sanitary system, you don't need a flammable waste trap, so.
Okay. You can drain down the sprinkler system some other means besides going into a floor drain?
We'd have to do it, we'd just have to do it through squeegees or through a connection to the outside, so.
Okay. That's been vetted out.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. And the, the water service doesn't have a fire hydrant on it. I'm assuming the fire department's okay with fire access, even though?
I believe so. I believe it's been reviewed, has it been?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the fire department certainly did receive a copy of the plans and is satisfied.
Great.
There are hydrants on the site within close proximity, fairly close proximity to the building. It's a big site, but, yeah.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah.
Thanks. Last question has to do, you mentioned something about coal product for winter treatment of the streets or something like that. Is there anything in those products with a runoff into the stormwater retention pond that would adversely affect the storage capacity of the pond or the treatment or the quality of water?
Well, that's a good question. For the most part, it's, there's sand, gravel, and rock, but then there is the cold mix as well, and there is a potential there might be some runoff from that. But my feeling is it's a 13-acre site, we're storing about 20 cubic yards of material on the site at any given time, and I think it will be fairly insignificant, but that's something we can check into.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I have a few follow-up questions. One was related to the drive-through, spoke about drive-through lanes. In my plan, I think, I've got a double plan. I don't know if anybody else had that same problem.
Yeah, everybody, sorry. That was a...
Mr. Brian, can you come forward, please, to the viewing audience? Can you hear you two?
Yeah, another technical glitch there. So we were in the process of making changes in the building, and we, they got superimposed on each other, so.
Is there, is there a way to put, because I think the plan that was in your presentation was accurately?
Yes. Uh-oh. I gotta get back into the computer again here, so.
The question regards to the drive-through lanes, and you've got four large overhead doors to the north, and then one on the east with a possible expansion along that eastern wall continuing to, or close up to a side yard setback, and then one on the west. What, which lanes are, is there proposed for being drive-through, and how will that be mitigated inside with everything else?
There's only two, there's only one lane that's a drive-through going from the south to the north. The other three doors are just pull-in, pull-out doors. And then on the north, we haven't determined that yet, so. I mean, I'm sorry, to the east, or the future expansion, we haven't determined. There is a connection to the east, a 16-foot door that will be removed to open the existing building to the future expansion, and there will probably be additional doors on the new, on the north side of the expansion as well when that happens. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, well, just kind of see, is that what staff and what the public works has kind of envisioned, is having just one bay? Or was there an opportunity where you wanted to have more than one bay for drive-through lanes? Just kind of thinking for the expansion nature. I mean, the public works down here across the Technology Drive is pretty full, and as the city expands its services, it's gonna, this is obviously in a demand at the present, but we're going to continuously add equipment, so just thinking like the 20-year long-term strategy here. We did put together a...
Can you state, I'm sorry, can you state your name for city record, please?
Certainly. Robert Ellis, Public Works Director for the City of Eden Prairie.
Thank you.
When we took this endeavor on, we actually put together a users' group of the parks, utilities, and street personnel to take a look at, well, what are our needs today? And that's where we come up with the footprint and really the decision that was put forward to put in the bays, the doors where you can pull-in, pull-out versus just a drive-through. So it really was organically the decision of the users that'll be used in the building. Now for the future expansion, we don't know what that'll look like. We don't know how big it would get. We kind of did a worst-case scenario as far as a footprint size when we laid this out, but it would move closer to the landfill, I thought was. It would be the opportunity where you could, we've got enough of a setback on the side next to the salt storage building, you could drive up that way, enter in if it was an in-and-out building, so you could migrate east to west through the building. Or, in the future, if we decide just to keep with the bays where it's a pull-in, pull-out, we could do that too. So it leaves a little bit of flexibility, and I suspect that when we do make an expansion in the future, it'll, again, it'll be the users of the building, the drivers of the equipment that are weighing in on what's going to work best for their operational needs. Speaking of the operational needs and how the layout was looking, very colorful, very colorful layout, it looks like things are quite packed in there. I'm not certain if there are any codes or anything on the statewide that for fire and emergency vehicle access interiorly. I mean, it is sprinkled, assuming it's a dry system because it's a cold storage, but what, was there any comments from the fire side on the Development Review Committee on what the mitigation factors interiorly would be?
You're right. Things are packed in there pretty tightly. The idea is that they're pulled in once, maneuvered and put into place and left there for four months, and then in the spring they're removed. And it's going to be a Chinese fire drill when they do it because it's, they're going to have to make sure everything can fit in there. Mostly was an example of how, how much stuff they could fit in there if they had to. And the idea being that some of the equipment that they thought that might need more immediate access could be pulled into the doors that are pull-in, pull-out doors and placed so that they're more easily accessible. Some of the other, like a trailer that contains a lawnmower, for instance, which is not going to be used during the winter, would be put into a location that is less accessible and left there, so.
Is there any maintenance that's going to be performed on any of the vehicles in here interiorly?
No.
So all the maintenance is still, any maintenance on off-season vehicles are still going to come to the maintenance shop?
Exactly. I mean, you couldn't even wash a vehicle in here. We have no drains. And there is no water, so it is just pretty much a storage garage, so. Okay? Thank you.
Oh, last question.
Sure.
The sprinkler room is in the northeast or northwest corner.
Yes.
We have a lot of north and west winds. It's why the MAC has two parallel runways at whatever, 29 degrees or whatever it is.
Yes.
Was there any conversation as to the temperatures, because it is cold storage, the temperatures of that northwest corner of the building affecting the sprinkler room area?
That's an interesting point. We didn't have that question. We located it there because of the proximity to the water line that's coming to the building. It's the shortest run to the building. It's an unheated building, I think that, and it's protected by the exterior walls. They're all, the exterior walls are insulated, insulated cores. They're not extremely efficient insulation system, but there is some insulation on the exterior walls. We'll insulate the interior walls and the lid that is put over the sprinkler room and heat it with a cabinet unit heater to, enough to keep from freezing. And then, you know, again, just to a minimum temperature. And there'll also be security systems that will alert people if temperature in the room falls below a certain temperature, so that's the concept.
I would just, on an academic basis, take a look at some of those figures again. We've had a number of building and outside building structures in Eden Prairie that had to remove or had to relocate various components of their fire protection system because of exteriorly a part of the weather and the elements. So having that right there in the northwest corner, and that's where a lot of the wind is just going to be hitting first.
Sure.
Just maybe on an academic basis, taking a look at those numbers again. Gander Mountain is one that comes to mind. That was most recent, I think, that I had to relocate, so.
Good advice. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Just have a question about security on the building during all the storage. Is there, what provisions do you have in mind or have you discussed?
Paul, do you want to address this security?
Sure. Hi, good evening. I'm Paul Schluter, Fleet Services Manager for the city. As far as security is concerned, obviously the building will be locked. There'll be a security system relative in place. Also, as part of this project, it's not in the scope of this, but we're also looking at putting a gate, a fenced-in gate operator at the entrance to the Moss site. We'd like to be able to do that depending on, you know, budget dollars, what we have available. So that's certainly one of the plans because it would be nice to be able to limit any kind of off-road traffic coming in and out of the site, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Good question. Thank you. Commissioners, anybody else have any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, very much. Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any questions, comments, or concerns about this project? Ryan, you're okay? You're good? No questions? Okay? All right. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, move to recommend approval of the site plan review on 13.45 acres based on the information included in the staff report dated January 6, 2016, and plan stamped dated December 31, 2015.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Project passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item for the public hearing for tonight is a continuance. The item is Eden Prairie Senior Living. It's a continuing item again. Location of the project is 10220, 10240, and 10280 Hennepin Town Road. Request is for a guide plan change from low-density residential and office to high-density residential on 3.37 acres. A planned unit development concept review on 3.37 acres. A planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.37 acres. A zoning district change from rural and office to RM-2.5 on 3.37 acres. A site plan review on 3.37 acres and a preliminary plat for five lots into one lot and one outlot on 3.37 acres. I understand, Julie, that the proponent is not here, but can you take us through the staff report or your recommendations, please?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as stated, the applicant is not here. As you're well aware, a public hearing was initially opened up on this item on December 7, and there was significant conversation and public testimony on the project. The applicant is continuing to work to address some of the issues that were raised at the December 7 meeting and has requested that the public hearing for this item be continued to the February 22nd Planning Commission meeting in order to allow them the time they need to address those concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other comments before we move on for motion? Need a motion on this, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, move to continue the public hearing to the February 22nd, 2016, meeting.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move it to the February 22 meeting. With that being said, Julie, do you have any planners' reports for this evening?
Mr. Chair, I do have one. I'd like to remind the commission that next Tuesday evening, January 19, the city council will host its annual Boards and Commissions workshop. At that work session, all of the advisory commissions present their work plans for the upcoming year, excuse me, present their work plans for the upcoming year as well as highlight some of their accomplishments for the previous year. So that presentation begins at 5:00 and extends through till 6:30 downstairs in the heritage rooms, and the staff liaison as well as the chair or vice chair make that presentation, but certainly all members of the commission are invited to attend and listen not only to your commission, but what is the goings-on of the other commissions at the city.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have any other items?
No, I do not.
Staff report. Okay. Members' report, community advisory committee report?
Just one update, there hasn't been a meeting due to the holidays. I did receive an email that the Chair of the Met Council submitted an op-ed piece to all the sun current papers. Eden Prairie ran it today, so it's in the newspaper from the city.
Okay. All right. Any other members' report? Okay. Any continuing business? Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.